I think there was a bridge right in there and it was actually, you know, I mean it was a commercial dock zone. Yeah. It's where a lot of the vegetables came off of there.
There was a, Frank, wasn't there a wooden bridge that went across there? Okay, that's what I thought.
Oh, more than that. Probably twenties. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, right.
No more historical. But does he make a good stroke after?
Wrong, wrong kind of stroke. He chokes up. Nice place to live.
Time to start our meeting. First order of business for the...
I'm sorry about that. First order of business is the pleasure of allegiance? Getting worse.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see a big crowd here tonight. Overwhelming, I guess. Slow night in Thursday in Vero, is that the case? We have, first item after the pledge is approval of minutes from the last meeting. If there are any deletions or additions.
Move approval.
And so, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A pose like sign. We have one item tonight, which is an item not on consent. It's the Realtors Association of Indian River County. They request for a site plan approval to construct an office building and related improvements within the Quaidoc Road historic buffer. Realtors Association of Indian River County owner, Kimberly Horn and Associates agents. And you're going to take that stand?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
For you and Mark.
Mr. Chairman, for this one, you definitely want to go ahead and swear people in?
No, we got quasi judicial. I apologize, Mr. Attorney. Anyone who would care to speak, please be, stand to be sworn in. This is quasi judicial.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
We can catch you later if we have to, but it's better to do it upfront and make it quicker and easier. Okay, Stanley.
For the record, I'm Stan Bowling, County Planning Director. This particular item is for approval of a site plan that proposes certain improvements within the Quaidoc Road historic road buffer. Normally, this type of site plan would be staff level approval, but because there is an encroachment that is proposed with this site plan in the historic road buffer for Quaidoc Road, the Planning and Zoning Commission has to review and approve it for the project to move forward as designed. I want to highlight the subject site itself is outlined in Aqua here. It's located on the east side of US-1. On the south side is 67th Street, and on the north side is Quaidoc Road. You all may remember this particular site, there was a rezoning not too long ago that you all recommended approval of, and the Board of County Commissioners granted, which expanded the CL, the limited commercial zoning, a bit here on the east side. So this property is split zoned. What that means is that the actual proposed office building and parking spaces are in the commercial zoning here. There are some stormwater and driveway entrance and landscaping improvements on the RM3 zone portion of the project. And I did want to just mention why we had this particular photograph or zoning map up, is that there's no access proposed along Quaidoc Road. Access is proposed along 67th Street. This is an aerial of the site that shows 67th Street is paved, but about one lane width wide. You all may remember that when the rezoning request came before you all, there was a resident along 67th Street that wanted to be contacted. When the site plan came in, that party was contacted for all the TRC meetings, and we had no objecting comments or negative comments from that neighbor. To the north here is the Quaidoc Road entry onto US-1, and it's unpaved and essentially a single lane all the way down to the landing as you get to the Indian River Lagoon. On this particular photo, you can see there's a lot of vegetation on the site. In this particular photo, a fair amount of some of the material you can see is actually Brazilian pepper, and if you've been out to the site, you might notice that there was some authorized underbrushing and mulching on the site itself, taking out especially in this particular area, some of the Brazilian pepper trees. You can also see from this photograph that along the 67th Street right-of-way, there are a number of trees, and that was a real factor in, the applicant and Public Works worked quite hard and for quite a long time on trying to get a design where they have to upgrade 67th Street to bring it up to county standard and yet try to save as many of these trees that are in the right-of-way as possible. This is a shot of the site plan itself that's proposed. The building here is in magenta, and the entrance over here, about halfway down the east-west length of the site, what's proposed is to upgrade 67th Street to a two-lane roadway to the proposed entrance of the site and taper back down to the existing pavement a little bit east of the entrance itself. You can see that the parking area is highlighted here in gray. It's a two-way flow and actually had to be kind of specially designed for the fire access requirement by the fire department. But there are parking spaces basically for, or I'm showing the cursor arrow right here going west toward US-1. This slide shows some of the stormwater improvements. There is a wet stormwater retention area on the east side of the site here that I'm pointing to. That's the deeper stormwater improvement. These kind of light green areas are going to be green, but they're shallow, dry retention areas, which again will essentially be grassed and they'll be landscaping around them, and part of their landscape plan shows that, but they are going to be dry and green essentially. The other thing that I wanted to point out on this particular slide is that these stormwater areas are kind of configured to work around some of the trees. There are a lot of constraints sort of on this site in terms of working around and preserving trees, and that was done even with the design of these particular stormwater areas. The buffers that are proposed along the site meet or exceed the county standards. This is a site that's within the US-1 corridor, so they have a local roadway buffer and then a US-1 buffer. The buffer that's proposed along Quaidoc Road is substantial. The applicant, the Realtors Association, really stepped up on this one. What they have proposed is a buffer that's 25 feet in width at the narrowest area, and then from this point on back, it broadens out to really, there's at least 45 feet of green area along the eastern stretch. And they have proposed a mixture of canopy trees, some of them, a half of them, 18 feet in four-inch caliper at planting, over 600 shrubs, these are all native species, to create a four-foot opaque feature as well along Quaidoc Road. It is a substantial buffer that they have proposed and that's shown on the site plan. Because this has impacts on Quaidoc Road, this isn't the first project that's come up, abutted Quaidoc Road, but the Historic Resources Advisory Committee reviewed this particular application, and one thing I want to point out, I'm going to go over in the slide, in the staff report, we had four items that the Historic Resources Advisory Committee, you know, some recommendations, some guidelines that they had. There's also, you might have seen in the backup material, draft minutes that has a motion in it from the Historic Resources Advisory Committee, and if you kind of put those two together, there are actually seven items. Four of them that are in the motion for HREC and in the draft minutes, but also from staff's notes, especially notes from Roland de Blois, who was in that meeting, where actually looked at seven things that HREC recommended during the discussion and in the motion, and this site plan, we feel meets those guidelines. The first one is that a minimum 30-foot type B, as in boy, buffer be provided along the site's Quaidoc Road frontage. My understanding, I was not at the HREC meeting, but my understanding was that, you know, the initial preference was for a type A. What they came up with was a type B, and I can tell you that the buffer that's in the landscape plan is somewhere between a B and an A in terms of what they can get in that 25-foot stretch. It's a very substantial buffer, and in addition to just the buffer type, four-foot opaque feature, like I said, over 600 native shrubs to really have a dense opaque feature there. Besides that, I just wanted to point out that for more than half the site, the buffer's actually more than 30 feet wide, so if you kind of, if you were to kind of average those, they would meet the 30-foot. There's a concern about the height of the building. As you've seen from the site plan, the building is actually away from Quaid, as far away on the site from Quaidoc Road as possible, and still meeting the setbacks from 67th Street, but it is a one-story design. It's not imposing sort of feature. It is not an imposing feature on Quaidoc Road. Another recommendation was that no construction access be permitted to the site from Quaidoc Road, and that is the case. Was proposed is access, construction and permanent from 67th Street only. A fourth guideline, recommendation from HREC was there'd be no pedestrian access from the project to Quaidoc Road, because it is a narrow road and there are safety concerns there, and that is the case. There are no pedestrian access proposed there. Another was outdoor lighting, directional lighting, downward directional lighting, and this, as I mentioned earlier, this project is in the US Highway 1 corridor, and they've met all the shielding requirements for a parking lot and kind of wall pack or outdoor lighting on the building itself. So shielding is, we've already got the specifications on that. A sixth recommendation is that the association erect a marker on the property with information about historic Quaidoc Road, and they have agreed to do that. And the location is shown on the site plan, and it's kind of on the upper northwest corner of the site, actually kind of be a nice location as you come off of US-1 onto Quaidoc Road. An appropriate place, staff felt, that they had chosen. The seventh was for the applicant to consider lessening of the excess parking spaces or redesign to eliminate parking encroachment into the 30-foot buffer area. And what staff and the applicant did after that was look at different aspects of the design, could they do, could they stay completely out of the 30-foot buffer area? And really, I can go through a couple of things with you and show you some of the limitations on the site, but what they did was reduce the degree of encroachment from their initial designs and came, instead of 10 or 12 feet encroachment, a five-foot encroachment for a limited area, and to expand the buffer as you get east of the encroachment. I want to go back just briefly to the site plan design, go back to this one here, and just say that the building itself, the location and the direction, orientation of the building, you know, minimizes the amount of, you know, again, it's away from Quaidoc Road. This particular parking arrangement, there are 14 spaces that are shown here, and there's actually a landscape island, like we have to break up the parking spaces and they'll have landscaping in there. So this is the extent of the encroachment. One of the constraints they have, the zoning boundary line is right here where I'm showing the cursor, so they had to keep all the parking spaces in the building and so forth within that commercial zoning district. So what they wound up doing is shrinking as much as they could, pull everything as far south as they could, and they managed to do that, and in staff's opinion minimized the encroachment. If you kind of look at the blow up of the encroachment itself, it's, this is basically five feet north and south, five feet wide, and 180 feet long, and there's a 20-foot stretch of that that is actually a landscape island, so there's no encroachment there. So you really have 160 feet by five-foot encroachment for this, for this whole site. Again, the buffer gets larger as you get beyond those parking spaces, and they had to keep them in this particular area of the site. They did, as I mentioned earlier, they did try to, you know, use angled parking and contract down as much as they could and still meet the fire code and getting around this particular area.
Stan, while you're talking about the buffer, would you go down to, just follow to the east?
Yes.
And you've got, there's a note that says 30 feet, 30-foot Quaidoc buffer, and then it says 25 feet again.
Well...
And I'm just wondering, is that, is this going to be a wave going through?
What they actually have here is, this area, they're showing that they're meeting that minimum 30-foot wide, and it's actually green area beyond that, but their whole, but where they're concentrating the plantings themselves is within the 25 and 30-foot area. But in terms of the green area that is behind that, in other words, you don't have improvements right up to that 25 or 30-foot line. And in this particular case down here, you have this wet detention area, which has its own bank and slope, which is green, so that's what I mean by the 45 feet. This is a photograph looking east, 67th Street, near US-1. As you can see, it's a narrow road, probably hasn't been paved in quite a while, and there are some trees that are within the right-of-way, and so, again, a lot of time I think was spent on the design with Public Works and the applicant, working out how to make this a, you know, a two-lane road that meets county standards and try to minimize, you know, impacts on trees that are actually in the right-of-way. This is Quaidoc Road looking west up toward US-1. If you come up this way, it actually kind of curves around before it meets back with US-1, and the subject site is over here on the left side. And you can see that in a lot of respects, it's kind of open along at least this initial part, about halfway down on the subject site. So that buffer that's proposed will really add a significant amount of vegetation in that particular area. This again is Quaidoc Road looking west, and then a little bit further back, again, the subject site is over here to the left-hand side of the screen. Staff's recommendation is that the Plan and Zoning Commission grant the site plan approval and the building of the certain improvements within the Quaidoc Road buffer with two conditions. One is that prior issuance of a CO, 67th Street be paved from US-1 to a point 50 feet beyond the project entrance, as shown on the proposed site plan, and two, that they install the Quaidoc Road historic buffer as depicted on the project site plan. Be glad to try to answer any questions that you all might have.
Anybody have questions of staff?
I have none.
Donna?
Stan, in our subdivision regulations, swales can only be used to convey water. And do we not have the same restrictions in commercial zoning?
Actually, we don't, but you're right. The Growth Awareness Committee, one of the code changes was to have swales for conveyance only. This is, that does not apply here. The other thing I want to point out is that we've had the dry retention requirements from the St. John's Water Management District come into play, and so these are actually retention areas, but some configurations actually require a conventional kind of swale-like length to them to try to work around existing trees, and so that's what they have proposed on this site. But this does not have to meet the subdivision regulations as a commercial site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Can you expand on, I mean, I noticed reading the minutes of the Historic Society, they prefer the one-story building, and this is one of those instances where they've done two stories that would have created more space. Was that more important to the buffer, I mean, than the buffer to them to be one-story so that...
My understanding from the discussion was, I think first and foremost, the principle was not to have an imposing-sized building right along Quaidoc Road. So I think that was one of the issues, what's this going to look like from there? And so I think this site plan addresses that in two ways. One, it pulls the building as far south as possible, the greatest distance away, and it's not a large vertical, but you're right, it's a trade-off, but I think having a bigger building closer...
They talked about that.
Having a bigger building closer, I think, would be, have a more of a visual impact.
Maybe this is really a question for the applicant with regard to the parking. I mean, it is, you know, what, 50% or almost 40% more parking than required? It seems, are they expecting that much traffic?
I can tell you that staff's perspective on that was that the design for circulation on the site with the constraints of the shape and so forth, it made, it was the most efficient layout is the one that, is the one that they have. And what they've told us is with some of their meetings, they do have more than, more demand than what a minimum is in the code. We thought it was better to have that on-site. If you have cars parking out in the Quaidoc Road or the 67th Street right-of-way, there's nowhere else for people to park if there's a big meeting. To us, staff's opinion was that was the worst situation.
I forgot, kind of, I was thinking day-to-day, but they do have...
They have the big meetings. We would rather see that on-site behind landscaping than if somebody has to start, you know, parking off-site.
Fair enough. Greg?
Stan, what was the staff or the design objection to the encroachment area being paved as opposed to a non-paved area for that five spaces?
Right. I think, and I let the project engineer talk about if you have a different kind of surface type or what have you. From our standpoint, the reason that, when you're talking about just a five-foot encroachment, I don't think that visually, that's going to make that much difference from Quaidoc Road unless it's some sort of vertical element. So whether you had, you know, some kind of impervious pavement or, you know, paver or something like that, that's visually not going to make any difference. It's going to be behind this very thick buffer. You would have a car on top of it, and that you might notice, but, you know, that five feet was minimal, so we did not insist on them trying to come up with something different. I don't know whether the project engineer looked at a different surface type for that last five feet or not.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Would the applicant care to be heard? Bruce, were you all, anybody?
I don't really, Bruce Barquette...
Were you sworn? I don't think you were sworn.
No, but, nope. I'm not going to testify either. I'm a lawyer. I'm going to argue, persuade, cajole, but not testify.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
I'm just here to answer questions. We, Stan, did a great job with the presentation. We don't have anything to add unless you have any questions. The project engineer is here if you need him.
All right, thank you. This is an item that's not on consent. It's not necessarily a public hearing. We've always tried to honor the people that show up that may have a statement. I see Lynn, Lynn, do you want to speak with, from the historic perspective or not?
Yeah, I would, you know, I, I think you're... Lynn Larkin, 401-7, Silver Palm Drive. Thank you for taking the time on a hot July night to...
Thank you for being sworn, because I know you want to cajole whatever, just like, attorney like Bruce.
I'm not speaking as an attorney, but I'll let Ms. Brookhart take that role. I'm on the HREC committee, and I just wanted to speak quickly to some of the things that we did discuss. It was a little bit difficult. We went through the background, two of the other things that had been built, the Antilles and another development there. And my concern, as I had put in a letter to Roland, was that even though the buffer is going to be somewhat thick, it's still not going to be the real kind of buffer that's going to prevent a view of the building. And it's a very pretty building, we're not saying it's not, but our concern basically was, you know, why allow the encroachment? Because much of the parking area could be made smaller. We realize that they, a lot of times the Realtors do have big meetings, and for day-to-day use, maybe they won't use it, but the requirements that are given for the building are actually less than what the parking is that they're recommending be put there. And so our concern was moving some way to get the K-Doc Road buffer really thick, really make it look, I mean, nothing's going to be as good as, you know, the natural setting, but it's very important, I think, for historic roads to make sure that they keep that ambiance. It's not just about, you know, pretty because they're recommending some very pretty plants and native plants and such, but unfortunately, we think along K-Doc Road that you need the full 40, and then again, as Donna pointed out, with the swale as well, you're getting into an area where you're not getting the kind of protection that the Historic Committee was really concerned about. So while the motion did include some more recommendations, we also realized that there were going to be some changes, and so it was good to see what had been brought up, and I think it's somewhat improved, but our concern is still the look.
In our documents, the indication is, is it better for worse, within your committee, there may have been discussion, argument, but in the end, you all have basically signed off on what we're looking at.
Yeah, and I wanted...
And fair or not, but I mean, I mean, but I think that's, you know, that's the impression we have, so...
Right, exactly, we're not, partly why I'm here too, because in the discussion, we had more concerns, and I did check with Roland later, because it seemed that we weren't given the option of making the A buffer possible. And so we had, at first, a majority where everybody said, that's what's in the regs for historic roads. Why can't we have that? And for these different reasons, that was what was, that's what we sort of crafted to come up with, but tried to make the suggestion that if you can lessen that parking, you can actually make that buffer, you know, what it's supposed to be. And again, you know, to, the discussion was also about, you know, knowledge of that road being there and knowing that you had to have that kind of protection, having extra parking places there seemed unnecessary, and so I think...
I would have, I would have agreed with you myself until I thought about their meetings, and then if we're, you know, what you don't, what you don't would be, would be the worst case, and have people parked along the side of the road walking through the buffers.
Right.
I mean, they probably wouldn't, but I mean, well, they could.
But they could.
And I think that's, it's kind of like, be careful what you wish for here.
Right, exactly.
It's like the two-story building versus one story. They can shrink it down, so that's...
Yeah. Yeah. I know. And that was our problem, too. We didn't want to say, okay, you bought this, and now we're going to tell you you can't do this. But, you know, they bought it understanding that they were buying a property that was adjacent to an historic road. And so that problem did exist before we sort of tried to mush it around. So we did what we could. And I know Chris is here as well, or was here, to try and make sure that, we weren't trying to make problems. But we also know so many times, and I looked in the Antilles minutes, you know, everyone talked about Jungle Trail and all the problems that you have. Once you allow that, and if you drive down Jungle Trail now...
I think the one thing that will be clear, made clear, if this went through, would be that this is not a precedent. This is absolutely everything, because you have to deal with it one-on-one. But it's not intended to be, nor, and I would hope the minutes, if it goes, would reflect that. This is not a precedent-setting issue. Because they also have given you more buffer in some areas. So it's, the idea would be for the thirty feet, type A, whatever to stick anywhere and everywhere until something else, you know, shows up.
Right. Yeah. Unfortunately, the thick buffer is back where the retention pond is and doesn't really protect you from, you know, the site of a very pretty building. But it was a difficult thing to try and work out because it isn't like a shopping center where you're going to have continuous. We were trying to do the best we could as well. But I do think as far as, you know, you may not want it to be a precedent, but, you know, they tend to be anyway, whether you intend to or not. So that was our major concern, making sure that we did the best we could. If you can lessen the parking, you can make that forty-foot thick. And again, with the trees, as anybody who knows trees, if you're going to have trees in it, it's going to lessen what grows underneath it. So you're not going to have as dense a buffer as you might think you would. And the reason I brought up Jungle Trail is because it does get cut, it gets edged, it gets destroyed in places. And so if you start with something that's less than what you really wanted, you're kind of, you know, asking for it. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Duly noted. Anybody else? You need to be sworn, please, when you come in before you speak.
Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I did. My name's Chris Crawford. I'm on the H-RAC. And I live in Vero Beach.
Would you state your address, Chris?
6336 Fourth Place.
Okay. You got it?
So I just kind of wanted to be general in that perhaps think about the size of the building and the size of the lot. And think of scale and proportion, what's being proposed here, and the context that exists. And, you know, think about precedents such as...
You understand, you asked them to go to one story, which is part of the problem right now. If they went to two stories, you could probably fit that on the property a lot easier.
Well, let's discuss the minutes. They haven't been approved. The H-RAC hasn't met since this issue was discussed.
Okay. So this is you personally, not H-RAC? This is your personal opinion like Lynn's personal?
No, I'll talk about first story because we talked about subdivision a couple of years ago, and that became an issue. I don't recall talking about story limitations during this review. So what I'm saying is the minutes are unapproved. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Does the applicant care to, anything to say one way or the other? Okay. Then we will duly, commissioners, we have our duty to do. Any thoughts, motions, any exercise?
I was under the impression that, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to review what my understanding of this is, just so I'm clear on this. We have Section 933.08, which you've provided us as backup, which, under restrictions, state that it shall be illegal and subject to the penalties provided herein, et cetera, et cetera, to engage in any of the following activities. A, the erection of structures within the thirty-foot buffer or designated protected area of any designated historic road. Okay? Then we have the H-RAC recommendations, which, okay, this is provided in, I guess these are unapproved minutes. The first recommendation states that the applicant should consider lessening excess parking spaces or redesign to eliminate parking encroachment into this thirty-foot protected area of Quaidoc Road. Okay? Those two pieces are clear. Staff's language on page four in the first full paragraph, staff's conclusion is that the small buffer encroachment proposed is justified, and that potential impacts on Quaidoc Road will be mitigated by the project's consistency with the H-RAC recommended project guidelines. Now, it seems to me that the only recommendation that H-RAC made that pertained to the encroachment is inconsistent with staff's recommendation. So I don't quite understand staff's language there, nor on the preceding page at the bottom, that the applicant modified the site plan to generally comply. I don't know what that means.
I think that's the average, maybe, but...
But in any event, I'm, we're being asked to grant an exemption to our code here. And I'm thinking about our historic roadways and our historic resources in the county, and how we've treated most of our historic roadways over the past fifteen years or so. And some of them have taken some minutes. These are, you have to think about cumulative impacts, I think. Each little act is kind of small. But the net effect over a hundred years, say, may render these somewhat less than what we would like to think we're leaving as a legacy is charming historic roadways. And I'm concerned about chipping away at these historic roadways, as well as giving an exemption to our LDR that controls this kind of activity, and setting a precedent, because it will. I mean, except that we've probably done it on other occasions with other roadways. I just don't think we've been doing a very good job of protecting this particular kind of resource.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can I ask, can I ask a question of staff? Does, I understand, what he's pointed out, we are granting an exception for the thirty-foot thing, for it to encroach five feet in. And we can impose that requirement if we so choose on this development.
The question, the question I have is, can the H-RAC or the zoning board or anyone else prevent them from building a two-story building if they choose to do that? Is that merely a recommendation, and they're trying to comply and be good guys and be good citizens? Or is it something that we can require of them?
There is no requirement. If they follow all the standard LDRs, there's no requirement that would keep them from building a two-story.
Can I have a question for you? And maybe for the civil engineer. And that is this. If it were a two-story building, could you put all the parking that, you know, we all agree that we don't want parking spilling over onto the historical road? If it were a two-story building, if you hadn't made this concession to the H-RAC, you know, and hadn't tried to make it work, if you had a two-story building, could you get all the parking you want on this site without encroaching into the thing?
I'm going to have to defer to Jim Vitter.
Is that...
Good evening. Jim Vitter with Kimling Horn, 601 21st Street. Yes, you could. But the point is, what I think staff's been trying to say is that the buffer we're giving, as it currently is, is denser and thicker. If we pulled everything back out of the five-foot encroachment, you'd have a less significant buffer on Quaidoc Road and a higher building. So you'd have more visibility of the parking and the building.
So what I'm saying is, you listened to what H-RAC had to say, and you guys all sort of weighed out what everybody, and you came up with the best solution, what you thought would best preserve the historical road, and still let them, I mean, you could have gone to a two-story road and done all of this stuff, but it would have had a less, a worse effect probably on the overall effect of what we're all trying to achieve for the historic road than the alternative.
The only thing I would have to ask, though, is of staff, since the rule is thirty, it's thirty feet with a type A buffer, if they did that...
Is that the rule? That's not the rule. That's not in the regulations.
Okay. I thought it was.
May I just point out also, Bruce Barquette again, for the record, I thought we had a thirty in an A. Commissioner Cox made a point about a hundred years from now. I don't think one year from now, you're going to be able to tell the difference in five feet between twenty-five and thirty feet. I would defy you without a tape measure to walk down that road and be able to tell the difference. But just a point, I mean, this is going to be a real...
I mean, all candor. I mean, the reason, my own personal feeling was that the twenty-five feet with the four-foot opaque feature in the Quaidoc Road right now is wide open. I mean, that area is fairly, is a clear area. Now, they're changing the look, but it's not like they're going by high bushes now or heavy trees. They're going by open grass. And so I'm thinking if you put in the four-foot and you've got the heavy, you know, a year or so, I mean, when they grow up, it should be thick. It should be, look better than it does now. But...
And the other thing to consider is, you know, look at the shape of the property. This is a challenging piece of property. I mean, and that's the nature of the property. But I think they've done a really excellent job of meeting the needs of the applicant.
What's the code say, when we're talking about the thirty-foot buffer? What are they, are they required just to leave it alone? Could they just leave it alone? And they're going to something between an A and a B. Let's call it a B-plus. They're, I mean, they could just leave it the way it is, right?
No, there is a buffer requirement. And I just want to make...
What is the buffer requirement?
The requirement is, by the way, what you're doing here is not an exception to the LDR. The LDR provides the P&amp;Z the authority to vary from this thirty-foot buffer. In other words, those following activities, don't do this, don't do that. You can do those if you have prior authorization from the P&amp;Z. And the rule is this, the erection of structures within the thirty-foot buffer or designated protected area. And the thirty-foot buffer for historic roads is a type B buffer.
Type B buffer.
So they have gone beyond the type B buffer, but they have narrowed it. And that's the whole point of them being here is five feet times one hundred and sixty feet.
But in order to comply with another request to have a one-story building instead of a two-story building.
Right. In other words, what, I think what they've done is offered as conditions to granting that five-foot encroachment, we will go above and beyond what we would otherwise have to do. And that includes the one story, the extra buffering and so forth, putting in the marker and that sort of thing. So they're doing more, it's kind of a trade-off, in essence. It's a trade-off. And you all have the authority to grant the request.
Donna?
I'd like to make a point. Sam, I don't think H-RAC asked for a single-story building. From what I understand, they did not even breach the subject.
I think that was one of their specific...
Body language I'm getting from a committee member. Ms. Larkin, can you confirm that?
Ms. Larkin, you can obviously testify on what her belief is, but she cannot testify as to what the official committee's finding. But she's more than welcome to give her perspective on what...
Staff says on page three that it was number two, that the height of the proposed buildings along K-Doc Road...
Well, that's unofficial. What they're saying is that these haven't been officially adopted yet because they haven't met since the last meeting.
I believe that is an error because we were told that it was going to be this particular building. We never discussed any change or requested any change in the size of the building or the height of the building. I don't recall that. I don't believe, you know, we've made corrections before, and I don't have copies of the meeting minutes. But I don't recall changing the building at all. We may have discussed that that was something they discussed because I think...
Somebody's got some, I mean, that's what we're looking at, and that's why.
Right. Yeah. I don't recall that. And I don't believe...
Like it or not.
Either.
Whether it's, you know, it's hard for us to say, well, it's official or it's not official. It's being presented to us as minutes from a meeting.
Right. And we should have met before then to verify it because I don't recall that at all. And thus, my letter afterwards, we were also told, just to clear that up, we were also told that the B was the official buffer, but they were already encroaching into the B buffer. Whereas my understanding was, it was supposed to be the A buffer. We didn't think we had that option, which was wrong. The full buffer was supposed to be what we would have recommended. We were told it only had to go up to B.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the code A or B?
B.
Okay. So that's B. It's B is what's required. Okay. All right. Bruce?
May I make one more point, please? I don't think Mr. Zimmerman's point is wrong anyway. Because if we were here with a two-story building, I promise you, you would be talking about why does it have to be two stories along Quaidoc Road? Mr. Hamner, you've done that to me when there's no historic road nearby.
You're right.
Just in PDs.
When you get two-minute two-story buildings, you start to hear about it.
Yeah. And I'll take, I'll take the oath to swear that you, the issue would come up if it was a two-story building.
I understand.
It seems like to me that the five-foot encroachment for a parking area, I would rather see that driving down Quaidoc Road, if I can see it, than see a two-story building through the trees. I mean...
I said, be careful what you wish for.
Well, yeah. I mean, it's, the balance that it seems like they've tried to come up with, other than that, we're going to squeeze them out of being able to do anything there.
Well, I have one question. On our A buffer, is a density, is an issue of density in plants when we get to the A buffer? If we said encroachment, but you had to have an A buffer versus a B buffer, is it, or is it the width? Because I was trying to...
It's the width. And the width is there, though, because of the planting density. And so what they have is a planting density that's greater than a B. And it's getting pretty tight. You've got, you've got one canopy tree every twenty feet...
There are yards all around Vero Beach that are overplanted. So you can overplant, and given time, it fills in. So, I mean, I know St. Ed's went through that with the neighborhood, and they, it's like a jungle down there.
Yeah. They have a very dense planting scheme for that Quaidoc Road buffer.
And that's what's been presented as their plan?
Yes. That's what we are considering.
So the plan is approved, they've got to stick to what they have. They can't back up to the B.
That's correct. And that's why it's a recommended condition, that they install that before CO and as shown.
Okay.
I'd like to ask staff that question. Stan, did staff come up with an alternative design that worked within the code?
An alternative design?
Yes. Did you have something else that, some way that it worked, you felt it worked in a different layout or different something?
The changes that we looked at, we took the building as a given. They've got, it was already kind of shaped a way that would keep it not going up towards Quaidoc Road. So we looked at how much they could take off of driveways or move things a little bit closer and pull things back. And they did. So what you have is an alternative that pulled back some of their initial, the initial designs that they had laid out. But it was by a matter of feet. It wasn't totally reorienting the parking in the building. I think if you look at the site, and that's why I was kind of going over that with the slides, I don't think there's a better way or more efficient way to lay this out and keep, and keep building away from Quaidoc and use, and meet the fire code for circulation on-site and the types of radii they have to meet for a fire truck to get through that site.
I mean, it's a little hard, you know, we allow parking studies to reduce parking if you can prove you don't need the parking based on our code. In this case, they've asked to increase the parking for concern on their own membership for big meetings as a, I won't say courtesy, but just for themselves, for their convenience, and maybe a courtesy for the neighborhood.
Right. And staff accepted that because we looked at the alternative as being worse.
Would there be any merit, you know, in some of the churches we've done, we've had the asphalt, and then we've had stabilized parking or whatnot for the overflow. I'm wondering if that would make any sense on the fourteen parks. It's still going to, it still would encroach. So I don't know that it makes any difference on appearance, but...
And that's exactly the way staff looked at it. We don't think that it's going to make a difference, a visual impact, because it's such a small encroachment.
When was the right-of-way on US-1? Was it, and how much land did they have, developable space did they have to, I guess, forfeit? You know, how much, how much did they lose there?
I'm sorry. I don't recall. It turned into a strip of land that was, I think, right around ten feet that they wound up during the rezoning. So it was not, I don't think it was a large amount, but maybe, you know...
We didn't actually donate any right-of-way for US-1. It was ten feet on 67th Street. And then there was a small part on Quaidoc Road. It was, you know, trapezoidal, about nine feet on one side and eleven or twelve feet on the other side that were both donated. So it's another reason that it...
Shrinking the site.
It shrunk the footprint. And also on Quaidoc Road, it pushed that thirty-foot buffer closer into our site because it was, and that was right where that parking area was. So donating that right-of-way pushed it further into the site. So that, you know, further constrained what we could lay out and wear. And the stabilized, even if it wasn't asphalt, the stabilized is still considered an encroachment.
Well, no, I mean, the encroachment, I just didn't know if appearance, if it had. But it won't, I don't think it'd be the site behind the four-foot buffer, you know, opaque buffer. You wouldn't see it anyway. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm still not convinced that, for myself, that I've heard anything that alters my feeling that we should be eroding the protection of our historic roads for a matter of convenience. And it wouldn't matter to me. I think that the site design is great, and the nature of the applicant could be fill in the blank. It's nothing about... It's nothing about the organization or-
Right.
-specifics of the applicant. For me, it's, it's a matter of the historic resources and our code. And I don't think that this is a do-or-die situation for the applicant or their ability to function on this site. I think that, that the rearrangement of, or even loss of, of a handful of parking spaces wouldn't be a complete killer to the project. I think this is a matter of convenience, and I'm concerned, again, about paving paradise here.
Okay, duly noted.
Parking lot.
Anybody else, any other comments? Or if not, we need a motion, please. All right, Greg.
I don't know. I think the, the bigger picture here is a single-story building. The concession of parking, to me, is not that significant when you consider that there could have been a two-story building there along this historic road. I do disagree, Bruce, with the 100 years and chipping away, because I think you're correct in this instance, because it's such a small thing. But chipping away at places in 100 years, I doubt if anybody will realize what Jungle Trail was like. And that's where, you know, big change takes place. But I think the single-story far out weighs the, the parking spaces.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we need a motion, or a motion with addendums or something.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
A second. Got a motion, McGregor, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Recommendation carries as presented. I would like the minutes, at least for posterity's sake, to say that our intention was not to make this a precedent, that we felt that it outweighed the buffer averaged out, or, I mean, at least I do, but that we try not to make this a precedent, and make David's point very clearly. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to commend the applicant for, for leaving the native trees, especially the larger oak trees and palm trees that are there, and for going ahead and planting extra natives. I mean, they could have put Exora in there, you know? And I think that that has a lot of merit, and that, that, to me, weighed my decision for the five-foot encroachment.
Mr. Chairman, I fully agree with, with Jen's, and I want to make it clear, there was nothing else about this application that caught my attention and caused me any concern. I think the design is laudable.
Good. Thank you all. Next item is commissioner matters. They haven't, they haven't on their heart, they've got to bear their soul about. Any confession?
Are we going to start at one end and work our way to the other?
Yeah, that's right. You start. How about planning matters?
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. This last Tuesday, at the July 23 Board of County Commissioners meeting, they took up a matter of the Waterway Village Devasta lawsuit and settlement lawsuit on concurrency. I know you all have probably been following that. If you want to look at the details, it's on the county website under the Attorney's Matters for last Tuesday. But as you all may be aware, 733 of the 1,596 units at Waterway Village have been vested since 2006. The remaining 863 units has been the matter of a disagreement with Devasta and the county whether they're vested or not. And there was a settlement approved by the Board of County Commissioners that we think will be, will be going forward. And what it will do is allow the vesting of the 863 remaining units. In return, Devasta is going to advance, speed up the improvement of 53rd Street and a four-lane 58th Avenue from 49th Street to 53rd Street. And so those capacity-increasing improvements will, will kind of go on our concurrency system at the same time that those trips are loaded. And when that is done, there will, there will be remaining trips on the system. And what that will probably wind up, coming before you, actually, will be a modification to their development order, kind of putting those, those conditions and that vesting in there. So you might see something in, probably a month or two on that.
To reaffirm their action.
And that's all, you know, I wanted to highlight.
I thought the article on Destiny was interesting, is that it should show up in the Sunday Times, which I think is a London paper.
Yes, it is.
It's out of the, out of the UK, and it sounds like they have very big plans out there if they're, if they're going to make, make the place green in the size of Washington, DC. I thought that was-
Sometimes it's better to market your project thousands of miles away.
It sounded like to me they were looking for European investors.
Yeah, well, it also looks like that they're all going to be coming to the beach in Vero.
Get ready. Okay, attorney matters?
Not tonight.
Okay. Thank you all for-
With this, this community development report that we received, for anybody in